Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for joining us on this evening. I would like to call to order the special meeting and public work session for Thursday, May 6, 2021 of the Portsmouth City School Board. I would ask now that you please stand with me and join me in a moment of silence at this time. Thank you. We're now be letting the Pledge of Allegiance by Ms. Sarah Duncan Hines at this time.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is standing here, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. We're now be letting our mission statement by Board Member Hines.
Thank you, Chair. The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you so much. We're now have our attendance by our clerk, the roll call.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Uh, here.
Ms. Hines?
Here.
Mr. Parent?
Here.
Ms. Schumay?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Tillage?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Reverend Patillo?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 3.6, approval of the agenda for May 6, 2021. Roll call vote, Madam Clerk. I'm s- I'm sorry, I'll entertain the motion at this time.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Parent, second by Ms. Hines. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Ms. Schumay?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 3.1, closed session. We do have a couple items on this evening. I would ask now that our Vice Chair would read the motion for the closed meeting.
I move that the board enter into a closed meeting under the provisions of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the following purposes: consultation with legal counsel concerning a legal matter regarding the advice by such counsel as permitted under subsection A dot seven.
Second.
Motion's been made and second by Ms. Hines. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Ms. Schumay?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. We're now in closed meeting.
All right, we are all back. I move that each board member certify that to the best of his or her knowledge only matters which are lawfully exempted from open meeting requires and which were identified in a motion to go into closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the preceding closed meeting.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Atkinson, second by Ms. Hines, and discussion. Send non-road call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Agenda item 4.1, agenda review for May the 20th, 2021 is in your board docs. If there's no discussion on that, we'll move forward. Agenda item 4.2, road call vote consideration of minutes for March 18th, 2021. I entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval. Atkinson?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Atkinson. Second by Ms. Hines. And discussion. Send non-road call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Agenda item 4.1, agenda review for May the 20th, 2021 is in your board docs. If there's no discussion on that, we'll move forward. Agenda item 4.2, road call vote consideration of minutes for March 18th, 2021. I entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval. Atkinson?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Atkinson. Second by Ms. Hines. And discussion. Send non-road call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Agenda item 4.1, agenda review for May the 20th, 2021 is in your board docs. If there's no discussion on that, we'll move forward. Agenda item 4.2, road call vote consideration of minutes for March 18th, 2021. I entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval. Atkinson?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Atkinson. Second by Ms. Hines. And discussion. Send non-road call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Agenda item 4.1, agenda review for May the 20th, 2021 is in your board docs. If there's no discussion on that, we'll move forward. Agenda item 4.2, road call vote consideration of minutes for March 18th, 2021. I entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval. Atkinson?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Atkinson. Second by Ms. Hines. And discussion. Send non-road call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Agenda item 4.1, agenda review for May the 20th, 2021 is in your board docs. If there's no discussion on that, we'll move forward. Agenda item 4.2, road call vote consideration of minutes for March 18th, 2021. I entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval. Atkinson?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Atkinson. Second by Ms. Hines. And discussion. Send non-road call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Agenda item 4.1, agenda review for May the 20th, 2021 is in your board docs. If there's no discussion on that, we'll move forward. Agenda item 4.2, road call vote consideration of minutes for March 18th, 2021. I entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval. Atkinson?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Atkinson. Second by Ms. Hines. And discussion. Send non-road call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Agenda item 4.1, agenda review for May the 20th, 2021 is in your board docs. If there's no discussion on that, we'll move forward. Agenda item 4.2, road call vote consideration of minutes for March 18th, 2021. I entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval. Atkinson?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Atkinson. Second by Ms. Hines. And discussion. Send non-road call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Agenda item 4.1, agenda review for May the 20th, 2021 is in your board docs. If there's no discussion on that, we'll move forward. Agenda item 4.2, road call vote consideration of minutes for March 18th, 2021. I entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval. Atkinson?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Atkinson. Second by Ms. Hines. And discussion. Send non-road call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Agenda item 4.1, agenda review for May the 20th, 2021 is in your board docs. If there's no discussion on that, we'll move forward. Agenda item 4.2, road call vote consideration of minutes for March 18th, 2021. I entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval. Atkinson?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Atkinson. Second by Ms. Hines. And discussion. Send non-road call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Agenda item 4.1, agenda review for May the 20th, 2021 is in your board docs. If there's no discussion on that, we'll move forward. Agenda item 4.2, road call vote consideration of minutes for March 18th, 2021. I entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval. Atkinson?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Atkinson. Second by Ms. Hines. And discussion. Send non-road call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Agenda item 4.1, agenda review for May the 20th, 2021 is in your board docs. If there's no discussion on that, we'll move forward. Agenda item 4.2, road call vote consideration of minutes for March 18th, 2021. I entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval. Atkinson?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Atkinson. Second by Ms. Hines. And discussion. Send non-road call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Agenda item 4.1, agenda review for May the 20th, 2021 is in your board docs. If there's no discussion on that, we'll move forward. Agenda item 4.2, road call vote consideration of minutes for March 18th, 2021. I entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval. Atkinson?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Atkinson. Second by Ms. Hines. And discussion. Send non-road call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Agenda item 4.1, agenda review for May the 20th, 2021 is in your board docs. If there's no discussion on that, we'll move forward. Agenda item 4.2, road call vote consideration of minutes for March 18th, 2021. I entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval. Atkinson?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Atkinson. Second by Ms. Hines. And discussion. Send non-road call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Agenda item 4.1, agenda review for May the 20th, 2021 is in your board docs. If there's no discussion on that, we'll move forward. Agenda item 4.2, road call vote consideration of minutes for March 18th, 2021. I entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval. Atkinson?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Atkinson. Second by Ms. Hines. And discussion. Send non-road call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Agenda item 4.1, agenda review for May the 20th, 2021 is in your board docs. If there's no discussion on that, we'll move forward. Agenda item 4.2, road call vote consideration of minutes for March 18th, 2021. I entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval. Atkinson?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Atkinson. Second by Ms. Hines. And discussion. Send non-road call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Agenda item 4.1, agenda review for May the 20th, 2021 is in your board docs. If there's no discussion on that, we'll move forward. Agenda item 4.2, road call vote consideration of minutes for March 18th, 2021. I entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval. Atkinson?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Atkinson.
We are all back. I move that each board member certify that to the best of his or her knowledge only matters which are lawfully exempted from open meeting requires and which were identified in a motion to go into closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the preceding closed meeting.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Atkinson, second by Ms. Hines, and discussion? Send non-road call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumate?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 4.1, agenda review for May the 20th, 2021 is in your board docs. If there's no discussion on that, we'll move forward. Agenda item 4.2, road call vote consideration of minutes for March 18th, 2021. I entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval. Atkinson?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Atkinson, second by Ms. Schumate. Is there any discussion? Send non-road call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumate? Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 4.3, discussion certain school board policies from VSB policy services.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Bracy. Mrs. Williams and Mr. Tillage serve on the Policy Committee and have reviewed the policies as put forth. These policies come to us directly as recommended from the VSB.
Thank you so much. And those policies are edited in our board docs, and they will be voted on at our next meeting on the...
25th?
20th.
20th.
On the 20th. If there are no other questions for Dr. Cromarty, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Agenda item 4.4 is a presentation discussion item on collective bargaining, and our school board council, Mr. Adam Carroll, will present that for us at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Vice Chair, members of the school board. This evening, I want to give you a change in law update regarding collective bargaining. As you know, collective bargaining was originally, or has been for some time, has been outlawed as far as government bodies being able to collectively bargain with their employees. So tonight, what we're going to cover is what the law looked like, what it looks like now, and to make sure you have an understanding of what the school board's options are going forward. So the presentation, I'll take a look at the legislative changes that took effect on May 1 in the first section, and then we'll outline the school board's options generally in the second section, and then I'll just briefly touch on some collective bargaining models just to make sure we're all on the same page about what this means. This is just a cover page, but if everyone's interested, that's the code section that we're dealing with. It's Virginia Code 40.1, 57.2. So the law prior to May 1 of 2021 was that there were no unions permitted with regard to governmental bodies. And this is the entire body of what that law looked like. So a school board, for instance, was not permitted to recognize any labor union or employee association as a bargaining agent prior to May 1. Effective May 1, 2021, that changed. So now, the state code permits public employers to participate in collective bargaining. However, it doesn't require a school board or any other public employer to engage in a public bargaining process. What it does is it says that a school board and other public entity may pass a resolution expressing their intent to engage in collectively bargained employment relationships with various employee units, or a bargaining unit of employees could form and then request certification to represent a group and then take it to the board level. Or neither of those can occur. So the school board options are really action now or wait and see. And before we get into, I guess, that, just in case there's any question, I guess we should talk about what collective bargaining is. And all it really is is a process by which employees through groups designate somebody to negotiate on their behalf over terms of their employment. In terms of employment, it's a very broad term. So we're talking wages, historically with union representation, it's workplace conditions and benefits, things like that, the ability to hire, fire, terminate, stuff like that, So like I mentioned and previewed a bit, the options under the new law are, one, take no action, or two, pass some sort of a resolution. And so I'll take option one first. Interestingly, the take no action discussion has way more slides than pass a resolution selection action. There's actually six of them, so sorry in advance. But just to be clear, the board has no requirement to be proactive at all, so there's nothing that you have to affirmatively do, you don't have to put it on for a vote, they can choose to do nothing. However, the board would be required to act and vote if it receives a certification from a majority of employees in an employee unit to take action. And if that occurs, even if that does occur, if an employee unit certifies and they bring it to the board and they request to collectively bargain, the board has 120 days to consider it, and then it would have to vote. And if it votes yes, we would like to collectively bargain, then that process starts. But if it votes no, that the board does not want to collectively bargain, then the issue is concluded at that point. So Virginia law is kind of notorious for this, but our new law does not provide a definition or any guidance for what constitutes a certification under that statute. So what we do as lawyers is we say, well, if the statute doesn't tell us what something means, we go to the dictionary and figure out what the plain meaning of it is. And so a certification is simply just a process of someone with an official document attesting to the status, according to Webster's. And so we might see that in a couple of different forms. We don't really know what it looks like because we haven't seen one. It could take a lot of different forms, maybe a letter, it might be a petition signed by a various group of employees in a unit, or some other notice that comes from a designated representative holding themselves out and saying, I represent at least 50% of this employee group. So if we receive a certification, what do we do? The first thing we do is determine if that certification is sufficient under the law. I imagine you'd ask me to do that. And what I would look at is if that certification is made up of at least 50% of a unit of an employee group. I know I'm being a little bit vague with what a unit of an employee group is, only because they can be defined in a number of different ways. There's, you know, designed by job category, status, and so on. So we won't know really what the employee unit looks like until we would receive a certification. But if we do get that and it is sufficient under the law, the board would then have a triggering obligation at that point. 120 days from receipt of that, the board would actually have to take a vote, whether to collectively bargain or not. And then at the very bottom in the small print there, sorry, Dean, I got ahead of you. In the very bottom of the small print there, I just want to reiterate that even if a proper certification is received, there's still no requirement of the board to adopt a resolution authorizing it. It's still within your discretion. So just so you kind of see it in print, the earliest a potential bargaining group could submit would be on May 1, and if a group submitted on May 1, August 29 would be the response deadline for a vote. But that wouldn't be the date that collective bargaining actually starts or goes into effect. That would be the date that a resolution is adopted that sets forth how you're going to collectively bargain with that organization. So just so you're aware, we put together some numbers for you. It may be hard for you to see, so I'll read them out, but we broke down current membership of Portsmouth Public Schools employees that are currently in employee associations, teacher scale employees, we have about just over 1,000, and we have 414, or 38.5% that are paying dues to an association. All other eligible type employees for employee associations are just under 1,000, and we have about 10% of those employees that are engaged in a active employee association. So option two is to say, as a board, you would like to explore collective bargaining, you would like to do it. And the code again is a bit vague. It doesn't give you any real limits on what you can and cannot do if you decide to go down that road. What would happen is you would have to come up with a resolution, and the resolution, again, would be pretty complex in nature because it would define the groups that you would want to bargain with, and also the parameters, what you would actually want to bargain. And then you would vote on it in the ordinary course of how you pass and vote resolutions. There's some guidance out there. The VSB, for instance, put out a pamphlet around October of 2020. I put the link in the presentation, and so you should, if you have it on your board docs, or if you don't, we can circulate it, you can link to it. But they do actually put in some suggestions and best practices about things to consider when drafting a resolution. And so, again, that would be a process. It wouldn't be something you would do kind of overnight. You wouldn't vote to say, we want to collectively bargain, let's just jump right into it. It would probably be an investigative process of how you would want to look at these sorts of things. Typically, there are two types of basic collective bargaining models. Now, I will tell you, there's a number of negotiation strategies, and there's a number, there's a lot of literature about there about how to go about the mechanics of collectively bargaining, and that's really not the purpose of my presentation. But I do want to just at least inform you that there's two typical types of bargaining models. The formal, former, the formal model is the one where I kind of envisioned the large auto workers' unions bargaining with auto manufacturers and giant conference rooms and going at it for days while the strike's outside. The more modern way to go about it, and Dean, could you hit a slide real quick? You can actually go to the next one. The more modern way is a more informal process, and it's usually typically longer, it's more issue-driven, subcommittee-driven, where the two bargaining groups get together and formulate lists of issues and work the issues to create a common, good result for everybody. It's more of a win-win scenario. So the informal process is typically what's used. The last slide says questions. Happy to answer any questions that I can about this law and the change and the mechanisms of it, but I'd like to leave you with the nugget on collective bargaining, that it's something that's relatively, well, it is new to school boards in Virginia. There are many states that bargain collectively as public groups. There's as much literature as you would like to find on the pros and cons of collective bargaining. And so, but that's not really the purpose of this. I just want to make sure you know what the law is and know what to expect in the event that you do get a certification or you do get questions about our obligations. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. Again, this is an item for discussion. Do board members have any questions for Mr. Carroll at this time? Thank you, sir.
I either did a really bad job or a really good one. I'm not sure.
I'm gonna say really good job, really good job. Agenda item 4.5 is discussion for educational plan for 2021-22 school year. This is not an item for vote, but for discussion to make the board more aware of how the division will proceed for the fall learning plan. So I ask Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you, Chairman Patillo, Vice Chairman Atkinson, members of the board, and Dr. Bracy. This week, we had the opportunity to meet with Mrs. Williams and Mrs. Duncan-Hines to talk about the educational plan for 2021-22. The general plan is that Portsmouth Public Schools will begin the 2021-22 school year on Tuesday, September 7, and all PPS pre-K through 12 students will return to in-person learning five days a week with pre-pandemic bell and bus schedules. Physical distancing and health mitigation strategies will still be in place. We will follow the guidelines of the Portsmouth Health Department and the CDC, as well as the other resources that we have available. There will be a virtual option. The virtual option for those students will not be what it is this year. It will be through a partnership with the Virginia Department of Education. For those students who wish to pursue full-time virtual learning, they will have to demonstrate a medical or social, emotional need for such, and they will have to provide documentation for that. The deadline for them to provide this documentation to PPS is June 1, 2021, because the registration for virtual learning closes on July 15, 2021. We will have information on our website regarding that. Mrs. Lasco has created a great tool for us to get information out to parents and to students. Pre-K will only offer in-person learning. We typically have a waiting list for pre-K, and so all of our available slots will be provided for those students who wish to have in-person learning. If we happen to use up all of our slots and still have some available, then we can look at other options for those students. But we anticipate that we will fill all of our designated slots with in-person learning. PPS will monitor student progress in our Virtual Virginia program because we do receive the average daily membership funding for these students, and we have to pay for those students to attend the Virtual Virginia program. We also will be responsible for the grades that they receive and for the accreditation part of this, and so we want to make sure that we monitor them, first of all, for their success and their progress. We're asking that those students maintain at least a C average while they're enrolled in Virtual Virginia, and if they fall below that average, we would ask the parent to have a conference with us to consider in-person learning and returning to that environment. A student who wishes to return from virtual learning to in-person learning must do so at the end of a grading period. This will be a one-time change only because we are not going to facilitate people going back and forth between virtual and in-person. Extracurricular activities and athletics will resume, and we're working closely with VHSL and our other resources to provide updates about that as they occur. We know that safety is our number one priority. We remain committed to returning to in-person learning. That is what we want. We want our students to be back in school five days a week on a full schedule, and we anticipate, based upon the progression that we're making now, that we will be able to do that. However, all consideration will be given to the safety and security of our students, our staff, and the families that we serve in this community. Are there any questions?
Thank you so much, Dr. Nguyen. I do understand you met also with our curriculum committee this week to discuss, and I want to thank them for their work.
Yes, sir.
With you as well, Ms. Williams and Ms. Hines. But at this time, we entertain any questions from board members for Dr. Nguyen. I start with Mr. Parent and Dr. Whitaker.
Go ahead, Dr. Whitaker.
Just a little clarification. What are the grades that are eligible for the virtual?
Virtual Virginia is only available for K through 12. I'm sorry, I didn't say that.
Okay, thank you.
And my question is, would you address the SOL testing for this year?
Students are receiving SOL testing this year. We have some students who are testing in person, and some are taking the alternate assessment, which is a virtual assessment. I think we have, and I don't know if Mr. Nottingham is here, I don't know approximately how many students we have testing in person, but so far, it's going well for those who are testing. It is our understanding that testing this year would not count for the purposes of accreditation, that these tests are being administered for growth purposes, and to give us some feedback on where our students stand when we come back to in-person learning. Our team is looking at those, and I've been asking them to work with our school teams to develop a student name and need types of things, and this will be one of the pieces of data that we use to assess our students' needs.
So the students that are virtual learning, do they take, are they taking the SOLs on their computers at home?
Yes, they are. Yes, sir.
That's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Were there any other questions for Dr. Nguyen? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Agenda item 4.6 will be board member reports, subcommittee reports. Do we have any at this time? Mr. Tillage?
All right. So yesterday, the Technology and Operations Committee met. We discussed the, some summer planning that the operations department is doing. They have a long list of good projects that the school, the school system will be doing this summer, such as some bathroom renovations and HVAC system upgrades that are well needed in the school division. Also, they'll be working on expanding our network for the school division, looking to double the capacity for next school year, as well as Chromebooks. The school division has ordered over 6,000 Chromebooks for our students, and so all but just a small fraction have arrived, and they're looking to also replace some of the aged-out computers that we have in our school division. And they'll also be working on some projects for the Shore Force, Power School, and Munis upgrades.
upgrades for our time clocks and for our online grade books. And so that really concludes our report.
And the only thing I wanted to add to that also was, I know Ms. Hines has been asking, and a few other board members, that the marquees are being replaced for the schools that are being renamed, and they're also have, forming the R F P for the other schools as well in the order they gave us earlier. So those are being worked on for summer projects as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other subcommittee reports?
Mr. Chairman, the H R Committee met, but thanks to Mr. Carroll, he gave our report.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Hines?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I was going to say, Curriculum and Instruction met, we went through with Dr. Winn, the reopening plan, we asked questions and got clarification, so thank you for a good presentation there. We also met with Dr. Nichols to talk about the new math, you know, if we, you know, as Dr. Nichols said, I've never seen math make the front page news before. And so she walked us through what was going on there, and with it still coming down from V D O E, it is still very vague. I will say that it will look different, but the new math implementation is not until 25-26 school year. So there will be plenty of times to ask questions and work with Dr. Nichols and get a fuller, more robust scope of work as it comes out from V D O E. But if you guys have specific questions about the math, we can go there.
Thank you so much. If there are no other committee reports, I want to thank you all for working diligently in your committees, it makes the presentations go a lot smoother, and I thank you all for coming out. And this board meeting adjourned, thank you.
Good night.